Okay, we're gonna have our Commissioners' Workshop for July 29th, 2025. It's currently 10:31, and this meeting is to bring up subjects that we don't cover in our business meetings, so anything goes here, I guess. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak? Carrie, Carrie Dotson's here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, this has got to come way down. Thank you for having me today. I just wanted to share a little bit with you about Lifeline and what we do. I know you're fairly familiar, but I wanted to go through a few things with you, and then I would like to ask for your help in a couple of things that we are struggling with at our agency and at a variety of the agencies throughout Lake County. So Lifeline is the community action agency for Lake County. If you aren't familiar with community action agencies, that's a federal designation for the agency that is supposed to be taking the lead on fighting poverty in the community. And so that is what we have been doing since the early 1980s in Lake County. Lifeline was founded in 1973. We became the community action agency in the early 80s, the mid 80s. In 2008, we're a little bit unique in terms of community action agencies. We're only, one of only a handful that's also a mental health agency. So we were certified by the Ohio Department of Behavioral Health in 2008. 2020, we became Joga County's Community Action Agency as well, so we now have offices both in Painesville and in Newberry. One of the things I think, two of the things that I think make us incredibly unique as compared to other agencies, one is that our boards have to have representation of the clients that we serve. We think that's really important for them to be able to advocate for themselves. So we do have either low-income people themselves, or family members, or volunteers from agencies that work with them very closely. So we do have their regular input into what we do. The other is that our main funding source, which is the Community Services Block Grant, it's a federal grant that's very flexible. It is to be based on community needs, and so every agency utilizes that grant differently based on what the needs are in their local communities. So what we do with it in Lake County is different from what we do with it in Joga County, is probably very different than what they do in Cleveland. So it's, it's unique funding in that it's flexible. We can change it all the time as the needs in the community change, which I think makes it really valuable funding for the residents of Lake County. Our board has always taken the stance that poverty means something different to every client that we see. We see a lot of senior citizens who live on fixed incomes. We see a lot of, the majority of our clients are hard-working families who work those minimum wage jobs and just can't meet the cost of living that we have today on a minimum wage job, even if they're working 40 or 50 hours a week. So those are the two biggest client groups we see. We do also see a significant portion of the homeless population and things like that, but our two biggest pockets are our senior citizens on fixed incomes and our working families that just don't make a living wage. So our programming, we have between our two counties about 25 different programs. Like I said, we, we think that poverty is a little different for every, every household and family that we see, and so we want to be able to wrap services around and kind of tackle their issues from every angle. You guys have a copy of a PowerPoint. It has a list of all of our programs in there, but a lot of housing programs, a lot of transportation problem, programs, a lot of senior services, most of those which are in part due to your generous funding. We run the Imagination Library for Lake County, utility assistance programs. A big one is our 2-on-1 program, which I know you're all very familiar with. So I did want to share a little bit of our successes with you, so you, you understand kind of what's, what's at stake with our agency. Last year, we assisted 3,162 unduplicated Lake County households. So those are our families right here in Lake County that we serve. It totaled over 6,000 unduplicated individuals. Our VITA tax clinics, we look at as a big economic driver for the county. This year, we brought in over $265,000 in returns for the clients we filed tax filings on. That's all money coming back into Lake County that they can spend on basic needs, things for their home, things for their children, or just put into savings. Our Lake County Imagination Library provided over 82,000 books to Lake County's children. We have one of the highest enrollment percentages in the state of Ohio for that program. 2-on-1 took over 22,000 incoming calls last year. Our Volunteer Guardianship Program, which you guys generously fund through the Senior Levy, right now we have 84, I think 84 wards who are under our care. These are folks who the court has deemed unable to make their own health and safety decisions, so we provide that care for them. And then one of our most basic needs services is our HEAP program. That's our Home Energy Assistance. That's for folks who can't afford to pay their utility bills. So what we don't want is people freezing in the winter or seniors overheating in the summertime. So our winter crisis served 300, or our summer crisis program last year served 348 households on our winter crisis, just under 500. So in terms of funding sources, our funding sources, our budget is about four and a half million today. Our funding sources have typically included the City of Mentor, the Cleveland Foundation, the Lake County Adams Board, generous funding from, from your board, the Lake County Department of Job and Family Services, and then a series of federal grants that we get through the Ohio Department of Development, and then the United Way of Lake County. So that brings me to the main reason I'm here today. We have four primary federal grants that fund our agency. So Community Services Block Grant, the Home Energy Assistance Program, and then Home and CDBG, which I know you're both, you're all very familiar with because those are county sub-grants. So all four of those are on the chopping block federally. For us at Lifeline, that would be 80% of our budget if those grants went away, would disappear, which would effectively shut our agency down and lose the services for those 6,000 people. I included a little bit of information in the PowerPoint about each of those four grants and what the federal, what the federal funding has looked like over the last couple of years and how we utilize those funds. So the Community Services Block Grant, like I said, is our primary funding stream. We received 654,000 for Lake County for the last two years. It's a two-year block grant. Those funds are used for things like our car repair program, to help people get to and from work. The requirement for the program is they have to be enrolled in school or job training or have a job, so that the transportation is critical to get them to those places. Our reentry program, I think you guys are perhaps familiar with our reentry program. Folks who are released from either the state prisons or the local jails come through our program to help them settle in a positive and effective way, whether that's helping connect them to housing or sober living, or mental health services, or help them get jobs, those sort of things. That's the sort of things our reentry program does for those communities. Our asset buildings and financial literacy, helping, you know, low-income people don't have a lot of money. If they can learn to manage it better, that's a win for everyone. And so we do a lot in, in that regards with asset building and teaching them to save and, and manage their money a little bit better. So those are the kind of things that are, we stand to lose. The Community Services Block Grant is currently budgeted at zero in President Trump's proposed '26 budget. Similarly with HEAP, we received about 600,000 for Lake County for last year. That is also currently budgeted at zero in the President's fiscal year '26 budget. Again, that's hundreds of households that won't have any kind of safety net to stay warm in the winter, or for our, the summer program is specifically for senior citizens, but to keep them cool and comfortable and safe in the summer. So again, that's, that's also zeroed out. And then, like I said, you guys are familiar with Home and CDBG in the President's budget. Those were both zeroed out as well. Those both provide really critical housing support services in addition to economic development programming. So, so the primary reason I am here today is to ask for your support. We are working hard to try to get our Ohio delegation in the House and Senate to perhaps look at cuts to the programs but not total elimination. We understand that the budget is, is tough, but I think eliminating all of these programs at once could do a real disservice to Lake County's lower-income residents. So we will be working hard with Congressman Joyce and our state senators to try to get them to maybe leave a little bit in the budget for these programs, but we would, we would love to have your support behind those efforts, if you can do that. I know Patricia Kidd is here today from Fair Housing as well, and her agency is seeing similar impacts to mine in terms of the federal budgets and what's, what's being proposed. So I will turn it over to her.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you?
Good morning.
I don't have anything pre-prepared. I'm kind of winging it, so bear with me here for a second. But basically, I'm not going to go through all the services our agency does. Just know that our primary clients that we serve are hitting probably about 3,200 a year. Most of them are seniors, persons with disabilities, low-income folks. Our programs were zeroed out as well. They completely targeted and eliminated all fair housing enforcement, as well as we're also a certified housing counseling agency, so we do pre-purchase home buy, and we do foreclosure prevention for folks to try to save their homes. I think Carrie's job is to help folks get tied into services. Our job is, once you're tied into services, to keep you there. Where our job is to keep you housed and to keep you stable. And as a result of all the cuts, our contract was actually terminated overnight. Overnight, we lost $1.2 million effective immediately on February 28th. It's definitely in litigation, like everything else is in the country right now, and that litigation is currently pending. As a result, we laid off three-quarters of our staff, and we put our building up for sale. So we are on DEFCON 11, trying to figure out how to stay afloat, and so far, we're doing well. Interestingly, though, the community calls and the need of our agency services has not dwindled, you know, in comparative to the staff. So I'm now doing intake. I'm answering the door. I'm the receptionist. I'm the landscaper. I'm housekeeping. I'm everything at the office, along with my other two staff, and we're doing the best that we can to continue to survive. The effects of, of the, our agencies complement each other in the services, and we're partners. We are constantly working together on all things. I'm also the president of Lake County Housing Coalition. Carrie, you're the treasurer secretary, vice president of the Housing Coalition. So we're coordinating, and we're talking, and we're taking a look at the community as a whole. And it's a scary time, because if our agency completely closes and loses all of our funding, Carrie's agency loses the funding, what happens? What happens to the residents, to the people that are the most vulnerable, the people who need the services the most, like our seniors, our persons with disability? What happens to those folks? And this is where, unfortunately, we're going to be looking at the county to say, can you help us? And not even just financially, but can you help support us? And it's support our efforts to try to continue to provide the services, at least the basic ones, to Lake County residents. That's pretty much all I have.
Can I ask you a question? My, my brief experience with Fair Housing was if somebody gets evicted, or their rent, rental agreement is terminated, right? And they come to Fair Housing to find out if that breaks a law, or some, forgive me. Can you just talk to that for a second?
Yeah, sure. I'm also an attorney. I failed to mention that. So we have a landlord-tenant hotline, we call it, but it's an advocacy kind of situation. And we actually also answer clients' questions for housing providers as well. So you come to us and say, I don't think that was fair. I think they terminated it early. They're overcharging me. They just upped my rent, and I have a one-year lease. What do we do? I get on the phone. We negotiate a resolution. It keeps people out of court. It keeps the costs down. Housing providers also know that they can call me and they can ask, you know, questions because it's always easier to ask me ahead of time before you mess up and do something wrong. And it really, really cuts down on the out-of-pocket cost, because most of the people that are renting don't, don't have the money to afford to hire a private attorney. And unfortunately, as we all know, legal aid is completely overwhelmed. Legal aid, you know, one out of every 10 evictions that we send their way, they might be able to take on one. Nine people fall through the cracks. So we do mediation. We run intervention. It's very informal. It's been incredibly effective, our program. And yeah, anything from repairs to health department violations, to mold, to, you know, how do I put my rent in escrow, to sexual harassment, just plain discrimination, any shenanigans or bad things that we call bad things that happened in the housing, to how do I find a place, negotiate a lease, do a walkthrough? So we cover everything for me to see.
And so, forgive my ignorance, are you the only agency in the county that provides that service?
We're the only agency in three counties that provides that service, yes.
Okay.
And it's zero-funded. We've always bootstrapped it onto everything else because folks don't, don't understand what fair housing means. So it's my landlord won't fix my stove, and that's not fair, so I'm going to call Fair Housing, and you should help me. Technically, that's a landlord-tenant question. And we have to get to the bottom. Why isn't he fixing your stove? Is it just a repair issue, or he's not fixing your stove because you just started dating a black guy? He doesn't like black guys. He doesn't like mixed relationships, and now he's discriminating against you? And our staff has the ability to flush those facts out and handle it accordingly, but our landlord-tenant hotline is so busy, and there is zero funding.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Not one?
Are you truly related to former Willoughby Hills Fire Chief Rich Harmon?
I am his little sister.
Well...
It's the county's best-kept secret, because we don't say, but yes, I am his little sister.
Well, Rich is a dear friend of mine, and I want to thank you both for your public service to Lake County in very different ways, but very important ways you've served us all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Mary Feathers, and we are doing Willoughby Lions and Magnifiers and More. We are doing a white cane walk in downtown Willoughby. Downtown Willoughby, so we're hoping we get a lot of support this year. Because of the blindness, you know, people get run over, they don't pay attention. So I'm hoping I get some support from the Commissioners, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. I do want to jump in here. First of all, the, the expression on this puppy's face, the leader dog, is just, you know, so loving and adorable. I don't know how you picked that picture, but it's just about, it's amazing. I, I want you to know that I am a Lions Club member too, and many of the elected officials in Lake County are, so we certainly share and support your cause. This is actually a very special year for Lions Club, which is the largest service-oriented nonprofit in the world, because what was founded, I think, in 1917 by a Chicago businessman, Lions Club really got their mission in Ohio. When they had their international convention in Sandusky, and Helen Keller herself was the keynote speaker, and she said, you do good things, but I want to call on you for a specific mission. I want you to become Knights of the Blind. I want you to look out for those kids who could have seen their entire lives if somebody had caught the disorder or the disease early. We want to prevent childhood blindness. We want to help those who are already blind and need a leader dog, need to have services provided so that they can live a full and participatory life. And so Helen Keller gave the single greatest volunteer organization in the world its single greatest mission, which is to be Knights of the Blind, and she did it in Ohio. So this is really a remarkable anniversary, 100 years of service now, since Helen Keller's calling.
Yeah, they're doing a big thing at Cedar, they're doing a big thing at Cedar Point this year.
So this white cane walk is happening at a, happening at a historic time. I'm a proud member of the Willoughby Hills Lions Club. Could you share your club with us?
Willoughby Evening Lions.
And so we're going to be marching down downtown Willoughby, and I'm told that it will be safe, even though there are blindfolds involved.
Yeah, you will be safe. You can blindfold it, and you have a sighted person walking with you. And about two years ago, I had taken Mike Zern to the first white cane walk, his first white cane walk, and he was like, he didn't even know some of this stuff existed. And my friend Debbie, who runs Magnifiers and More and Mentor, she's also part of this white cane walk, and a lot of people didn't even know she had a store like that.
Well, I will say, you clearly inspired Treasurer Mike Zern, because he went on to become president of the Willoughby Hills Lions Club. He's our president now. So I, I can tell you, he's heavily promoted the white cane walk in our group. I know our club is going to be participating. We certainly all look forward to seeing you in downtown Willoughby. Before I let you go, can you just share how anyone who wants to be involved can be involved in this event to raise awareness and money for the prevention of blindness and childhood blindness in particular?
More than likely, be better off going to Magnifiers and More, because she has, like, all that information, plus Becky Lynch is part of, part of my team, along with Mike Zern.
Thank you so much, Mary, and thank you for your dedication to preventing blindness in Lake County.
Well, actually, my husband is blind, and I met him on a blind date.
Love is blind.
That's right.
Carrie, you have a second?
Sure.
Where are, where are we? I know the, the bill, most recent, there was a bill that was passed, but that was not the budget bill at the federal level, right? So where are we in the budget process?
So right now, the, the House and the Senator are marking up their appropriations bills. I would assume that will go through August and perhaps even early September. So now is a good time to be contacting our reps and senators as they're working to, to flush out those bills. The, the bill that was just passed, the big beautiful bill, was the reconciliation for last year's. We made it through that fine, which is good because that most, that money is mostly spent. And since, because we're coming up on the end of the fiscal year. But yeah, the budget for '26 will start October 1st, so they're, they're running a little behind where they usually are, but they're working on those appropriations bills.
But it has to be done, obviously, by October 1st?
Well, either finished, or they'll, they'll pass a continuing resolution, which is a possibility.
And have we had, forgive me, I'm looking at you Commissioner Plauchek, have we had an actual budget, or has it just been continuing resolutions?
It has been continuing resolutions for a very long time. I think, oh my gosh, I'm trying to remember the last president who had a budget.
It's been a while. It's been a while.
In a continuing resolution situation, can, does your funding continue?
Honestly, that's a best-case scenario, because it would be level funding until a new budget is passed. So that honestly is a best-case scenario for, I mean, we are not going into the new budget wanting, we're not asking for increases, we're, we're not even asking for level funding. We're asking for reasonable cuts, right? So things that we can still do what we do effectively, perhaps on a smaller scale. You know, again, we're understanding of where the federal budget is in terms of the deficit and whatnot. So we're not trying to be unreasonable. We're not asking for more money. We're not even asking for level funding, although that is what a continuing resolution would do, is level fund. In the '26 budget, you know, we, we're just asking not to be eliminated completely.
You're, you're not even asking for level funding. Something tells me that your expenses have gone up with inflation and that the need is getting greater.
Absolutely.
So you're not, you're not, and I'm not trying to give your speech for you, but I'm just trying to get a grasp of the issues.
We're, we're trying to see the bigger picture, you know? As Patricia said, it's not just us that are impacted. It's almost every nonprofit in Lake County that's going to feel this, and we all partner together. And so, you know, we, we don't want to be greedy. Now's not the time to be greedy. Maybe, maybe down the road, we'll ask for more. We are dipping into our reserves a lot more than we ever have before. Our unrestricted and our investments, those only stretch so long. We did do the math, and if, if, if funding was eliminated October 1st, we have enough in our investments to maybe keep our agency afloat for a year, maybe. And then after that, it would, you know, we, we have generous sources of local funding, but those only fund parts of what we do, right? So...
The four slides I'm looking at to talk about, the four funding sources, the Community Services Block Grant, the HEAP, the Home Investment Partnership Funds, and the Community Development Block Grant. If you don't mind, could you, not right now, give us, or at least email me or let me know, give me an idea of the number, or number of individuals or households that are being provided with these services?
Yes, some of that's in there.
Some of it is.
Some of it, yeah. HEAP, I know, is in there.
Yeah, I do, yeah, okay.
Yeah, some of them are in there, but yeah, I can, I can for sure email that data over.
And then also, to your point, that these dollars have an economic impact, right?
Right. Right, it's bigger than us, you know? I, I talked about our car repair program, which helps local people, you know, continue to be able to work. That money all goes to local mechanics, right? So we're helping 80 people a year with that program, let's say. That's, we do up to $1,000 in repairs. That's $80,000 going to Lake County mechanics to fix those cars, you know? We have agency-wide contracts for IT services, you know, office supply. I mean, just basic things like that, we, we buy locally, so, and then with the housing programs, the impact on the local landlords, I, I don't know how some of the local landlords would stay afloat without our programs. You know, they provide the sort of housing that are, you know, rental housing is what I'm referring to. A lot of our tenant, or a lot of our clients are renters, and a lot of those landlords are folks that don't own big giant chains, right? They own one or two houses here or there, and, you know, when they run into a little bit of trouble with a tenant who, who maybe has a health crisis and can't work for six weeks, and then can't pay the rent, they come to us for things like that. But if that's not available to them, it's not just the residents that's going to suffer, it's the landlord too. So you're right, there is definitely an economic impact.
Then they're right back into...
Then they're right back in Patty's lap. But yeah, so you are right, there is a definite economic impact as well.
And I assume the HEAP, for keeping heat on, helps with paying energy bills, and I do know that energy companies like to receive their money as well.
They do. And again, that's another, that's another local issue, right? Like, we do have the big, the first energies and the end bridges for, for electric and gas, but a lot of eastern Lake County is rural, and they have fuel oil, and those are all local fuel oil companies that we work with. Painesville City, I have a meeting with Doug Lewis next week to talk about what the impacts on Painesville City Municipal Electric will be if our HEAP program goes away. It's a lot of people that rely on the HEAP programs for help with their electric bills, and if that's not there, that's revenue not coming into the city.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody further? Will it go ahead?
Ms. Deanna Dimitro.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deanna Dimitro with United Way. I just want to take a moment to thank you for engaging in this conversation, but a couple of things I wanted to point out. As Commissioner Beveridge said, you know, assuming the need is growing. So right now, the most recent statistics in Lake County, one in three of our folks are living below that Alice threshold. So that means folks that are working but are having a hard time making ends meet. And just to give you an example of something that we've heard from one of our funded partners, Birthright, who provides formula for families here in Lake County, right now, they are already serving 40% more families than they did last year overall, not just at this point in time. And what we know is that our birth rates are down, so if we have less babies but a higher demand, we can see that the need is growing across the county. These programs that Carrie and Patricia are talking about, you know, it's part of that safety net, but we also have Torchlight, who has programs eliminated. We know that there are 60 kids that were receiving mentors last year through the Wickliffe Schools, that that program's now off the table. And so we're not just talking about this sort of reactive, let's help people right now in the moment. We're also talking about all of the preventative programming is on the chopping block, and those are the things that we won't see the long-term consequences for, for maybe 10, 15 years down the road. And so I think that this conversation's incredibly important and incredibly nuanced as we talk about what this means. Yep, HEAP's incredibly important. Chances are, people aren't going to turn their furnace down or off because they can't pay their bill. They're going to continue, and then they're going to go into debt, and then that debt's going to create more additional problems for them. And so what we have right now, besides our shortage in housing, is all of the things that all of our funded partners are working to support are really threatened, and we are the smallest fish in the funding pond. So we're investing to try to fill gaps, and we're struggling every year to be able to do that, and those gaps are only about to get much, much larger. So again, I just wanted to offer both my support to Carrie and Patricia, but also my thanks to you three for being willing to engage in this conversation. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Exley.
I'm new to this. Is the podium a requirement for this discussion?
Just so we can hear you on the record.
Okay. I thought there wasn't supposed to be record notes.
Oh, yeah, this is a legit meeting.
Okay, Alan Exley, Lake County Engineer. No, I just wanted to touch base real quick, I see this is, maybe it's not the correct forum, I'm speaking amongst some very important issues that are happening within the county. But I wanted to make you aware that I am still moving forward with the SR2 lighting issue, I know that's a major concern as well. I don't know if this is the correct forum to address that, but I did, you know, I have touched base with Mr. Hackman. I'm putting a letter together for Mr. Boyd. I have, through much diligence, come up with an agreement for less than seventy-five thousand dollars that I think we could work with. Hopefully, you're around this week, that you take a look at what I have, and we can get that approved. More due to the need for keeping with the schedule. I want to move things forward as quickly as I possibly can, I've decided to take that leap, to take on that agreement myself. And then as we move forward, I know we need to come up with a meeting with the stakeholders and make a nice showing of the Commissioners, the Engineer working together towards this end. And again, like with the Madison Avenue retaining wall, we're going to have to discuss funding, and how that's all going to work to be able to make this happen for the people of Lake County. Just wanted to give you that little bit of an update, if we can work together on a schedule for when that meeting would occur, so I can be prepared for that, that'd be great. And if there's anything we need at this time, that, I actually haven't received any questions in the last couple of weeks, it's kind of quieted down, but I'm sure it'll come back up again, and it's nice to be able to say, yes, something is moving forward.
Thank you. And Mr. Administrator, if you could get that meeting scheduled as soon as possible with the mayors and managers?
Yeah, I'll make sure the county engineer's ready, let me know what, when you're ready, ready. And I, where do y'all want to have that meeting, here?
I think here would make sense.
Okay, yeah, I'll coordinate some dates.
I do, I do believe this is the right forum, so, you know, I think they all listen to this forum. So it's good to hear that, we're continually working on that. Even though we don't have as many emails, we all hear it by those same mayors and managers, and every time we see them, so...
Oh, I'm sure of that, and yeah, just let me know if we can sit down and figure out some dates that may work. I would assume we'd look at something in an evening forum for everybody's availability. I don't know what your feeling is on that, we could come up with something.
I do think we want to schedule it as a workshop, whenever it is, just so that there's no issue with all the Commissioners, you know, participating, because we do want to talk about decisions at a meeting like this. So I think the time is flexible, whatever works best for everybody, and Jason will be in a position to see, as he's reaching out, what that might be. But it should be a workshop session, so we can be very frank and talk about the substance.
I would recommend that we reach out to, I think Mayor Fiala's the chair of mayors and managers, and just, I know it's a separate meeting, but use that date they have held, it's the fourth Monday, we can, because trying to coordinate with twenty, well, I guess it's just the West End, excuse me, let me think about this. I know there's a placeholder for the fourth Monday of the month where everybody is available, if we wanted to suggest that.
I'd be open to that.
Yeah, and forgive me, I think I'm talking about three different things here, sorry. I'm slow on Tuesdays. One, we need to, are you saying you have a solution for the lights for seventy-five thousand dollars or less?
No.
Okay, so what was the seventy-five thousand dollar comment?
That's for a consulting firm to produce a design.
Design for the solution, got you.
Seventy-five, we can sign that quick, I think that's where you're going.
Uh-huh, and then we get that design, and/or we need to have a meeting with the stakeholders along Route Two, correct? For not only the conversation about the lights, but obviously about the contract issues, right?
I think we'll need to have a discussion with them, everything from how they would like to move forward. Do they want to move forward based upon some costs, you know, based upon that? Do we all want to work together as a team to do this under one contract? Working with Mr. Hackman, we're going to have to put together a design plan, because it's going to be in excess of a million dollars worth of work. You know, that exceeds the seventy-five thousand dollar limit, obviously, so it's going to have to be a bid-out project, which takes time. So we're going to have to talk about schedules, we're going to have to talk about, you know, whether, you know, who's going to, we have to get commitment for involvement, all the above, and how that's all going to be funded as well. So once we get through all those talking points, we'll know exactly what direction we're heading.
Alan, once the contract's secured with the consulting outfit, do we, do you have an estimate on how long it'll take to give them a product or a design? I mean, I think if it's not terribly long, it'd be nice to have that presented at this meeting, to say, here's the plan of attack, but I'll defer to the electeds.
My personal opinion, this is probably going to need more than one meeting. So I would move at light speed to get everybody in the room together.
Pun intended?
What's that?
Pun intended?
I didn't even mean that, I'm so sorry, yeah, that was a total Commissioner Plushnik line right there. Sorry, John, I stole that from you.
Mr. President, I think that our, I think that we should declare an emergency and break the laws of physics to move faster than light. I think that light speed alone is insufficient, with respect to Commissioner Beverage.
Do we know, I would prefer to see us have, get them all in the room, start to have a conversation, and see where we're at, right? Because there is more moving parts than just the conversation about the state Route Two lights. And so, let's get a feel for where they're at on that, while we're having the consultant come up with the plan, you probably know ballpark what this plan's going to cost, right? You know, estimate-wise at least, right? And so we can at least have an estimate cost in our minds as we're having the conversation. But that way, everybody is at least had a chance to get onto the same page, so that when the plan comes back, if we say, hey, here's the plan, here's what it costs, blah, 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 we talked about this already, then I think we can finalize some of those conversations. But yeah, as we spoke a little bit earlier, I encourage, please, engage our office on some of these projects, right? We've been talking about funding sources and conversations, and we are, in my opinion, entering an era of advocacy politics, where as we engage our state friends and our federal friends, we've got to do a better job of being able to get in front of them and saying, hey, listen, I need this. Commissioner Rekovich and I were down in DC a little bit ago, and we met with the Department of Transportation on some of these things, right? And they cared about safety, and they cared about families, and they cared about shovel-ready projects, right? These are the conversations we're having. Well, I can't think of anything that's more safety and shovel-ready and involves families than trying to, you know, a project such as getting the lights done. So the better you keep the projects and plans in front of our faces, the better we can advocate for you and try and go after and get some of these funding sources, so... But if you're looking at doing it on those Mondays, they just had that meeting yesterday.
Yeah, you're a point well taken, there's, help me out, eight, the three, four Ws, I think we can get that meeting, I'm looking at, I'll get with Engineer Exley's schedule, we'll try and get some...
And even if it's after the August meeting, right, I don't know where the August meeting is, or if it's...
No, I think we can do it before that. Now that, now that, I'm sorry, I was thinking twenty-three communities, seven communities, right? And then clearly, when they see this email come through, with State Route Two and the subject line, I think we'll get some attention.
So Mr. President, I think that, and Mr. Engineer, I think that the plan here is, let's get the seventy-five thousand dollar consulting plan done now, and Mr. Boyd is going to work on scheduling a meeting with mayors and managers as soon as humanly possible.
Good, good, thanks, thanks for coming in, I appreciate it.
Yes, and I agree with that, and with any plan, there's options, there's variables. So as we have those discussions, we can, we, as we're moving forward, there's always more information. So at whatever point we're at when we have that meeting, that's the information that will be presented, and we can dial in on exactly what we want that construction contract to look like, and what we will all include with that, and how we'll go about some of those things. I think we're moving in the right direction on it, and this will be very helpful, I appreciate it.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Exley.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nobody being seen, I want to say this meeting is adjourned.